We got it now.
Boost myself up here.
Lot of names, that was.
Right, surprise. All this time.
Be grateful. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen on Tuesday, June 22, 2021, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Levering, and Alderman Clea will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present, and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Clea.
I am here, and I am in the chamber.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here on Zoom, I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
I am present in the chamber.
Alderman Karen.
I'm here in the chamber.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I'm participating via Zoom. There is nobody in the room with me. I can hear everyone. And the reason for not attending in person is because I am running late from work.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderwoman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present.
Alderman Laws.
I am here. I am participating on Zoom. My eight-month-far-along pregnant fiancee is unvaccinated per the instructions of her OB-GYN at Mass General. So I'm trying to stay safe and not be in public as much as possible.
Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present, and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
You have 13 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. Well, it's great to see you, Madam President, and other members of the Board of Aldermen live and in the chamber. We haven't been here for, I was thinking, 15 and a half months or so. And of course, the new chamber looks great. The technology, I think, is going to be a big, big help. And so thanks to whoever, to all the people that contributed to making this a much, much better space, and I think in the end, much more people and public-friendly. There were a few things, Madam President, that I wanted to mention. First, I thought I would update you briefly on the vaccination status. The last figures we have suggested about 48,000 Nashwans have received at least one vaccination. Of course, children 11 and under are not being vaccinated. And certainly, kids from 12 to 17 are probably under-vaccinated. So probably 60% or more of adults 18 and over are vaccinated at least once. 43,000 people have been fully vaccinated. So we are climbing, but we need to continue to encourage others to get vaccinated. Public health is still working hard on this. I know Director Bobby Bagley was out before the meeting doing some in-home visits, catching people whenever she can. And of course, other public health personnel and nurses are doing the same. I wanted to mention also the Fourth of July celebration. So we will return to fireworks at Holman Stadium, fully open, at full capacity. Rather, but this year, for us that have in the past celebrated in some of the suites upstairs, there will be a change because I thought that the kids in the city have gone through a lot in the past year. Of the VIPs or city officials and others, we invited kids from several different organizations to use the suites. So we have about 20 to 25 kids from the Children's Home and about 20 to 25 kids from the Boys and Girls Club who will be using the suites. And I'm sure you all agree that that is a good use of that space. And I hope for them it will be a unique experience, being able to see the fireworks at such a close proximity. So I think that will be a very happy event. I just briefly wanted to mention R. 21149, which will dedicate home funds to neighborworks to enable them to build four affordable units on Ash Street. Of course, four units is not a whole lot. But on the other hand, four more affordable units in a housing market as tight as this one, where affordable units are in very, very short supply, is a great addition. I wanted to mention the farmer's market. That opened for the first time this Sunday and will be open from now on Sunday until October. It's interesting that I was talking with one of the people that has been working at the farmer's market for some time. And last year, they did a count. Because of the COVID protocols, people walked through in one direction. So it was easier to do a count. And they got 300 to 600 people per Sunday during COVID. So the vendors all say that they do very well at that farmer's market. And I think this year will be another good year for them. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention that I had the privilege of attending the Nashwa North graduation. I wanted to go to the South graduation as well, but they had to keep rescheduling them because of rain. So I had a conflict for South. But the weather was really fantastic. It was held at Stellows. I thought, having attended some up at the Snoo Center up in Manchester, I thought that Stellows was a better environment when you've got good weather. Outdoors, it feels really good. The kids are really happy. And of course, the families were all there. So I thought it was a great event. It was very inspiring. We heard speeches from the valedictorian, the salutatorian, and the class president. All were very, very good. And in addition, it was just overall, you know, I thought a wonderful experience. We, of course, for our kids, education is a right, not a privilege. And this just marks the endpoint, at least for a public school education, secondary education for, in that case, almost 400 kids. So I think we should be very proud of the young people that have graduated and have grown up here and of the teachers and other educational staff that have dedicated themselves to making them very fine young men and women. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Let's start on this side. I just want to say something to the mayor. I really appreciate that you invited the children to watch the fireworks from one of the suites. And I know the kids where I work are really excited about it. So thank you so much for doing that. Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Aldermen meetings of June 7 and June 8, 2021, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Four communications have been received from Matthew Sullivan, Planning Manager, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen on proposed Resolution R. 21148, authorizing the acquisition of a portion of property at 44 Buck Meadow Road, tax map C, Lot 25, on a petition submitted for the street layout of 44 Buck Meadow Road. Proposed Resolution R. 21147, authorizing the conveyance of discontinued portion of Old Groton Road and a petition that was submitted for a street discontinuance, portion of Old Groton Road. A communication has been received from Lori Wiltshire, President of the Board of Aldermen, calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting on July 1, 2021, at 7:15 PM, relative to Resolution R. 21142, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file.
Communication from Susan K. Levering, City Clerk, regarding the issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
From Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding a report on overnight parking.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one in the chamber has signed up. Is there anyone on Zoom that might have their hands up to be recognized? Madam Clerk, do you see anyone on Zoom that... Okay, very good. We'll move right along. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract for telephone landline service at the Hunt Memorial Building in the amount not to exceed $5,411.99, funded from accounts 53628 Contract Services, 131 Hunt Building.
Did we get that number again?
Yeah.
Five million, 5,000.
Yeah.
Pardon me. Pardon me, my apologies. That is for an amount not to exceed $5,411.99.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year contract for telephone landline service at the Hunt Memorial Building to Comcast Cable in the amount not to exceed $5,411.99. Funding will be through Department 131 Hunt Building Fund, 53628 Contract Services. And Madam President, can I have it by roll call?
Yes, you can. Discussion on the motion. They would have been much happier getting 5 million. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 13. Yes.
We didn't tell the clerk that I had walked in the room. So she didn't know to call me.
We're going to finish the vote. Because were you here for the whole discussion?
Yes, I've been here for 15 minutes.
Alderman Lopez arrived at 7:40 PM.
Would you like me to record his vote, President Wiltshire?
Yes, please.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
Thank you. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 7, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 9, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 10, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 14, 2021 Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 14, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 15, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 16, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21137, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $352,78 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity fiscal year 2022 Regional Public Health Network Services.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, I'd like to move for final passage of R. 21137 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21137 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21138, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $25,563.84 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety, State Homeland Security Grant Program into police grant activity, 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Madam President, I motion for final passage of R. 21-138 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21138 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21149, approving the use of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program Funds by Neighbor Works of Southern New Hampshire for 40 Ash Street.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-21-149 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 21149 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21150, amending the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development annual action plans for fiscal years 2021 and 2022 relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21150, and I'd like to speak to it, please.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. This is normally, you know, put behind us at this point in the year, but there was an adjustment by the U.S. Department HUD. And they allocated some more funds to us based on the formula. So we had to look at that. And so the request and what was put forward from the committee was that the 9,742 that was reallocated because of the formula change, plus a reprogrammed amount that was no longer needed from Front Door Agency Go to the Sandy Pond project that DPW had inquired about. And that was what the committee agreed on and is in front of you today.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21150 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
There is none.
New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. 21152, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
Alderman Lopez.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to determine if it's necessary to move forward with proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health by roll call. And if it's in order, I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Lopez.
So the Board of Health is a commission of three, which is appointed by the mayor and was codified in our city charter, which is why we would need it to be on a referendum. But because it's only three, it's vulnerable to having a member be out or even more than one member. Their minimum quorum is two. So they can actually meet if somebody is not able to attend or if somebody has another commitment. But that also leaves a committee that essentially can deadlock itself if there's ever any slight disagreement. In being the liaison over the last couple of months, I've found that a number of meetings were not able to continue. They were, they needed to be concluded because people had to go to work or had to deal with patients. And that's something that we shouldn't necessarily create a conflict with because of a small board. So as a doctor, you have ethical standards. If you set appointments with patients, you really do need to be present for them, if possible, to create any kind of ethical conflicts. But when you're only one of three people and you're being also asked to sit on a committee that may be determining public health responses to an emergency, that creates a conflict. So what I'm hoping for is that by adding two additional members, we'd create a larger number of commissioners that would be able to attend and maintain meetings. There was also some opportunity in working with legal. The language identifying the membership of the board is pretty antiquated. It does not reflect any opportunity for someone with mental health experience particularly to participate in the board. And that's understandable because at the time the board was created, mental health was in its infancy. But there is an opportunity to do that, and I think that would be a helpful member considering some of the public health issues that present at our city now are a massive surge in suicides or substance use disorder outbreaks. So I think with the opportunity to expand the board to make it a little bit more sustainable and a little bit less prone to crisis, we also have the opportunity to include a more holistic approach to medicine. There is also the opportunity for someone with advanced public health credentials to participate on the board. And the reasoning behind that was just that, at the moment, the only input for public health as an experience and as a discipline on the board is from our own staff. So it would be good just to have a neutral party who has that experience to also be able to weigh in. So that is my reasoning for putting this legislation forward. I hope the board will support it. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez, if I could. First off, the Board of Health is appointed by me and approved by the board, not appointed by the mayor.
Okay.
Just for clarification. The other thing, Attorney Bolton just advised me that your motion can't have the word "if" in the first sentence. You made a motion to determine if it's necessary, we need to strike the word "if." Could you amend your motion to do that?
Sorry, I read the script, but thank you for the direction, Attorney Bolton.
Would you amend your motion to take that out?
Yeah, I would like to amend my motion to determine that it is necessary.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Lou.
Thank you. This sounds intriguing and interesting to me. I think it's worth considering. I would like to suggest that it goes to committee before we vote on whether it's necessary. That is what I thought that we did with charter changes. I think it would be rather than schedule a public hearing on something, it would just be better to address it at committee and at that point decide whether... I don't know whether we need to come back to the full board to decide that it's necessary, but I would... I know the... So that's how I feel. That's why I will vote against this.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
If I could ask Attorney Bolton for a clarification on the process. I had thought this is the process that we had to follow, but I'm not opposed to having it discussed in committee before scheduling the public hearing. I am concerned that the month turnaround for reviewing it with committee puts us into the end of July, probably August, depending on what the committees we refer it to are. And if we schedule the public hearing then, Um, and if we schedule the public hearing, then we might run into the timeline for when we can't put things on referendum.
I think you make a very good point, Alderman Lopez. The statute that governs amendments to the city charter is very specific. And after the determination that it's necessary, the city clerk must forward the language to three state officials, who then, after receiving that, have 45 days to compare that proposed charter language to all of the state statutes and determine whether any state statute would be contravened. Then you have to, well, let me say this, after you determine it's necessary, you have to schedule a public hearing that has to be noticed in the newspaper. When you get word back from the three state officials, you will then have to finalize the language, taking into consideration what you hear in the public hearing, taking into consideration what those three state officials had to say. Uh, if they say anything other than, "Go ahead, you'll look okay." Uh, once they say that or don't say that, you have seven days to finalize that language. If you change the language, you need to schedule another public hearing. Again, it has to be advertised in the newspaper in advance. My understanding is if this drags along beyond the first week in September, we will miss the opportunity to place it on the ballot this year. So you may, in fact, run into a time crunch at some point in the process.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, with respect to Alderman Lou's concerns that this undermines the public input process, if we vote tonight, um, and do determine that it's necessary to move forward with it, and then the committee does not recommend it, or if there is, um, public comment that, you know, Alderman ultimately don't choose to accept a language, this doesn't move forward. It would just go into legislative abyss. Is that correct?
This doesn't commit you to putting it on the ballot. It doesn't commit you to the existing language. Uh, it just is a determination that it is necessary. In this context, necessary does not mean absolutely necessary. It means more akin to being appropriate and helpful. So you are not irrevocably committing anything. And in fact, it doesn't change the charter until the voters vote to approve it, if they ever do.
Thank you.
All set, Alderman Lopez?
I would just, uh, I guess, comment that in my opinion, voting to identify it as necessary is giving the voters an opportunity to directly weigh in on an issue that, over this past year, has directly affected them. Um, and, um, I think it does place some bearing on the timeliness of responses that we've gotten in terms of direction, while largely, I think, public health and the Board of Health have done an outstanding job under a lot of duress. I think having, uh, a larger capacity might have enabled them to explore issues a little bit more closely.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I agree with, um, Alderman Lopez. I, like many of us here, attended a lot of the Board of Health, uh, meetings, and, um, oftentimes it were just two people, and we would hear, "We're gonna have to continue this because one of them had to leave." Um, and it's no reflection on them, it's just the process of there's only three people. So I do believe that we will have less issues if we do, in fact, um, go with the five. So I'd like to at least start the process of, um, making the determination, and I will be voting for this.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, you know, I, I don't, um, I don't want to do anything to, to derail this. I think, you know, uh, I think Alderman Lopez's, um, does, you know, desire to increase the number of, of people on, on the Board of Health, you know, it's, it sounds like a great idea. He, as liaison, has, has seen, um, them in action and, and knows the problems and is trying to solve the problem. I, I think, um, you know, this is, uh, you know, the, the problem I have is that, you know, where, where, because of the, I, I guess because of the way the statute is written, you know, we, we are supposed to first determine that this is necessary. And, you know, it, it, you know, it, it probably is, but we ran into the same problem with the Police Commission, uh, charter change. Uh, you know, we were, we were asked to vote that night, you know, when, when the thing was first presented to us. We've, without any discussion, without any debate, we were asked to determine that it was necessary so that it could go to the public hearing. So I don't know, and, and then, and I think afterwards, um, I, I may be wrong about this, so I, I won't, I won't say that. Cause I, I don't want to say anything that I'm not sure of. But I, I don't know what the solution is, but, you know, I understand Alderman Lou's reluctance to vote, to make a determination that this is necessary when we haven't had a chance to discuss it. I don't want to derail it, and, uh, so, you know, given Attorney Bolton's instruction that, that, um, or suggestion that, um, you know, if we don't determine it's necessary tonight and it doesn't go on to public hearing, then we run into scheduling problems. So I, I will vote in favor of this, but I, I don't know if, um, you know, in the future, you know, you know, whether, you know, whether we, we need to look at that, that language, I, I guess, or, you know, I, I guess if Attorney Bolton is saying that's what the statute says, and, but I, I think that if we had more time, you know, I suppose what he's saying is that if we had more time, you know, then it could be referred to committee, and the committee could make a recommendation as to whether it's necessary or not, and should go on, uh, to the public, you know, come back to us for that vote, and then we schedule a public hearing, but, you know, because we're, you know, once again, we're, you know, through no, I'm not blaming anyone for this, but once again, we're, we're, we're facing deadlines that, um, that require us to do anything. And I don't think this is, there's anything really controversial, uh, about this. I think if, if we vote tonight saying it's necessary, it goes on to public hearing. There'll be plenty of time to discuss it then. The committee will then discuss it. And, uh, I think there's plenty of room to, to tweak it or, or abandon it if, if that's appropriate. So, so, you know, I'll, I'll vote for it tonight, but I'm, I'm, I understand Alderman Lou's, reluctance to, to vote on this and, uh, you know. So thank you for letting me think out loud.
Sure. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I just have a question. So when I look at the next motion down there, it says, this is gonna go to Personnel Administration.
Yes.
So it goes there before it would go to public hearing. Just trying to get clarity for myself. Where it go to public hearing first?
It's the same night.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. You all set? Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom?
Madam President?
No. Alderman Lopez.
Um, just as an observation, um, yeah, it's pretty cumbersome that you have the public hearing on it and then the committee meeting at the same time, but there is public comment at the committee meeting and also at the Board of Aldermen. So if any significant red flags were raised, then I think there would still be public input, but I have not changed very much here.
Alderman, Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Um, I would just like a little clarification. It seemed to me that, I'm not sure if, um, I heard Corporation Counsel's answer to the question, "Do we have to take the vote tonight?" Uh, because I, it seemed that you went on to say, "Yes, this could be a real crunch, a time crunch if it's not done tonight." But, um, we do have the option of, of voting in committee on the necessity? Am I correct?
You wouldn't believe me to matter what I told you, so I'll define the answer.
Now, that's,
You've made yourself clear in the past, Alderwoman Lou.
Well, I'm very sorry, but I think that I deserve an answer. I've apologized to you more than twice.
That is an absolute lie. You have never apologized to me.
You have refused my apologies. I'll send you the emails.
You have not.
Well, do we have another, um, attorney that could answer my question?
We do not.
Okay, well, then I object to this vote based on, I can't get an answer.
Anyone else? Alderman Karen.
Yeah, um, to you, um, Madam Chair, to Corporation Counsel, you said that this may not get done in time to be on, um, the November ballot. Would that mean we would have to have a special election, or would this just die out in December?
It would be up to the board.
Okay. All right.
I would not be inclined to hold a special election for this. I mean, I, if it's gonna go, we should, we should send it. We still have time to talk about it at committee, at the public hearing, back here at the board. We'll have plenty of time for input. This is just what the statute says, according to our attorney.
Yeah. No, I appreciate, I just don't want us doing this and then find out that, you know, we have to, we have to have a special election, so be clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alderman Mulcher.
Yeah, Alderwoman Kelly.
Thanks. I don't want to belabor the point, but I, I do agree that there is some confusion, at least in my mind as well, in terms of how are we supposed to determine whether this is necessary if we haven't had the discussion yet? So it does feel a little cart before the horse, just the way it's written. So there's a, an opportunity to adjust that in the future, and maybe there isn't. I'm sure Attorney Bolton could weigh in on that, but it definitely is confusing when things come and they, we were asked to determine if it's necessary, uh, with, with no information.
Did you want to address that?
If the piece of legislation had been introduced earlier in the year, there would obviously be more time. If the legislature were to, uh, adjust the statute so that it did not require a determination of it being necessary before a public hearing could be scheduled, then it would perhaps be easier to understand. I didn't write it. I wasn't consulted before it was written. That's what it says.
Could I follow up, please?
Are you all set?
Um, Attorney Bolton, if, when you say, um, attorney, when you say legislature, you're referring to the state. This is a state statute that makes us have to do it this way, correct?
Yes, that's what I meant when I said the legislature. Yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
New Hampshire Legislature. Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, so, um, so just, just to clarify, I, I, I think what you're telling us, Attorney Bolton, is, you know, if, if we had more time, um, so if this had, this ordinance or this charter change had been introduced, you know, two months ago, for example, uh, it is possible, uh, under that circumstance, that it could have been referred to the committee before the determination of it being necessary. And then, you know, the committee could discuss it, make a recommendation to us. It could come back to us. We could say, "Yes, it's necessary." And then the, the public hearing could be scheduled. If there was enough time, it could have been done that way.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Uh, as much as I love sitting here and debating, uh, process with everybody, I am not sure how much more we're gonna learn about the necessity of this after, uh, going through a pandemic and, and teaching and, and listening to what Alderman, um, Lopez just told us about how the, the Board of Public Health operates. If we think about it, the, um, uh, Public Works, uh, has five commissioners. Uh, Police Department, uh, has five commissioners, Fire Department has five commissioners. This would,
Police has three.
Three. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But I think, given, uh, the considerations, uh, of, uh, the Board of Public Health, um, that, you know, I think it's, it's an easy decision to say this is necessary. We should move forward with this tonight and, um, let it go through the process from here.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou.
Um, I just want to explain that, um, a big reason why I am moving, uh, to, uh, send it to committee first is that I wanted to establish that that is an option. It's, it was my understanding that's an option. I believe that Corporation Counsel has told us it's actually an option. And after the last reading to change a, um, to change the charter, I felt that it, well, I now can tell that most people or, or many people in here were not aware that it was an option. And I wanted that to be more clear. And the reason I say that, um, uh, Madam Chairman, I'm sorry if I'm making you roll your eyes, but the reason I'm saying that is I had conversations with people and, and, uh, Corporation Counsel is very angry with me because I expressed that I tried to get to the bottom of it at the meeting that night.
You don't know why I'm angry with you.
Excuse me, I'm speaking?
Yeah, and now I'm speaking.
No.
And you're misrepresenting me, and I'm interrupting you so that you don't continue to misrepresent me.
Who's running this meeting? I'm sorry. I'm all set.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion that Alderman Lopez made? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeas and one nay.
That motion carries. Uh, given that, I will assign this to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee and the Board of Health, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen meeting on Tuesday, July 6th, in the Aldermanic Chamber at 7:00 P.M. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a first reading of Resolution 21-153, which was received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-153, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $50,000 from the Kresge Foundation into public health and community services grant activity, equity in COVID-19 response.
There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of Resolution 21-153.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-153, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $50,000 from the Kresge Foundation into public health and community services grant activity, equity in COVID-19 response.
You heard, uh, okay. Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, any other sponsors? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Schmidt, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, and myself. Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-21-153 by roll call. May I ask a question?
Alderman Karen.
Yes, is this time sensitive? Is that why we're doing this?
It is. Yes. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Alderman Jettie.
Uh, it, it seems pretty obvious, but can we, can we have an explanation as to what this is all about?
Well, it's money that, um, the city's accepting from the Kresge Foundation to start the post-COVID work that the Public Health Department needs to do. And it, the, the grant started in June, and if they, if we don't accept it tonight, they probably won't get it in until August, at which point the grant will already have been in play for three months. So they really want to get started on that work, and they can't do it until they have the funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on the motion for final passage? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21-153 is declared duly adopted. New business ordinances.
Can I ask a question?
Reading of Ordinance O. 2166, providing for Alderman at large to act in committees to meet requirement providing for Aldermen at large to act in committees to meet requirement that forums be physically present.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and Alderwoman Harriet Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment. There is no one in the chamber, is there anyone on Zoom from the public that would like to give comments to the board? Do you see anyone, Madam Clerk?
I do not, and I see no hands raised, President Mulcher.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will go to remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. I'm going to start over here tonight.
Actually, the RS 21-153, I think it is, Lopez, can we assign one of the sponsors? Because I don't think we did that with his, or you can't.
Which one are you talking about?
Lopez, 21-152.
53.
52, it says.
52, you're right, I'm sorry.
Is it necessary?
Did you want to be added as a sponsor?
Yes, thank you.
Did you have any comments, Alderman Gathright?
Yes, I just want to say that Southern Hampshire Outreach for Black Unity and the Greater Nashville NAACP will be celebrating Frederick Douglass on July 3 at the Library Common at 12:00 PM.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, I think it's necessary to say that you know, we're a legislative body, you know, we gather, and this is the first time we've had a chance to to meet in person for some time. But, you know, these meetings are, you know, this is where we, you know, discuss things. The right-to-know law prohibits us from talking about stuff outside of these meetings, you know, we have to, you know, it has to be properly noticed, and the public has to have an opportunity to watch us debate these issues so that when, you know, when we discuss things, I mean, we're doing our jobs. And, you know, you know, I you know, I hope that none of you thinks that when I ask questions or I talk about things that that I'm wasting your time, or you've got someplace else you'd rather be. I'm sorry about that, but this is my job. I mean, I was elected to come here at these meetings and talk about these things with you people and reach a consensus about issues. So the second thing I'd like to talk about is I'd like to 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 all of my fellow French, people of French-Canadian heritage, I would like to wish a a Bon Saint Jean Baptiste. This Thursday, the 24th of June, is the Feast of Saint John the Baptist. It's a national, it's a holiday in the province of Quebec, and it's a national holiday in Canada. And this Thursday in Nashua at 11 o'clock, there's going to be a celebration of the installation of that sculpture down at the park known as Le Parc de Notre Renaissance Française. That statue is actually called La Dame de la Renaissance Française, and it's a statue, a statue which was installed 20 years ago. So there's going to be a celebration of that anniversary. But the statue commemorates the role that women played when French-Canadian immigrants came to this city. You know, the women as mothers and as teachers, you know, taught the immigrant children at that time, the French-Canadian children. And that's what that statue commemorates, and that's what that's all about. So there's going to be a celebration, I believe the mayor's going to be there, and someone from the French Council from Boston, and someone from the the Quebec delegation. So anyone who's interested is welcome to come and join us, celebrate Notre Renaissance Française. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else on this side? Alderman Tenza.
Thank you. So I too wanted to say that, you know, it's very, it's nice to be back here in the chamber with many of you, and hopefully soon enough we'll all be able to be back here. The chamber looks great. The one thing that I do miss is the picture of a younger Mayor Donches staring back at me. It's not there anymore. But we're fortunate to have an older, more experienced Mayor Donches in the chamber here with us, but it's great to be back. This is also our last full meeting before 4th of July. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for opening up the box to some of the younger residents of the city. I hope they really enjoy that. I'll say that I probably never really noticed the fireworks, all the fireworks that were going on in the city until we got a puppy in the fall, and now I notice them every, every time that they're going off. And it's made me realize how much of a nuisance they can be for other citizens in the city. So I would ask, and I know Alderman Lopez will probably bring it up too, that as we enter the 4th of July season, if you're thinking about wanting to go to fireworks, go down to Holman Stadium, celebrate with everybody else, and leave the individual displays for other cities and towns. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Well, with regards to fireworks, because fireworks can be pretty disconcerting to individuals who've served in combat or veterans, we, I wanted to invite the board, we are working on an alternative 4th of July celebration, barbecue, on the 4th of July. It's in French Park, but it's really in front of Delaney's House for the veterans that are there. We're working on a mural to act as a capstone for the Hearts and Minds series. So we are trying to honor veterans that way, and it is largely in sympathy for the fact that not everybody wants to hear things exploding above them to celebrate the birth of our nation. As an add-on to what Alderman Jettie brought up regarding the Thursday dedication, it's also the recognition of the mural that's being painted in the, in French, Le Parc de Notre Renaissance Française. The mural is co-sponsored by Involved Impact and the Richelieu Club, and features some prominent Nashua citizens, Franco-Nashuans, who have contributed to the community. Former Mayor Lozo is among them, so if Alderman Tenza is an aficionado of former mayoral pictures, then you can check that out. And then lastly, I wanted to thank the board for considering the legislation for, in my opinion, strengthening the Board of Health, and then invite the board as well to attend the Tree Streets Block Party this Saturday. The block party will be from 2:00 to 6:00. The street will be closed from noon to 5:00. So basically during the 2:00 to 5:00 period, we're in the street, but then we move the events over into the parks and then open the street up for the volunteers and the participants to start unloading their stuff. Some interesting features this year is we're going to have a food stall tournament. We installed a food stall court about two years ago with the Your Choice, Your Voice grant program. It was a project that was proposed by, I think, an eight or nine-year-old at the Powell Center. And it was supported by the community, we installed the food stall court. The soccer community is very excited about it, and this is an opportunity to kind of see it in action that we were a little bit robbed of in 2020. We are also going to be featuring the Public Health Department. They're going to be giving out COVID-19 vaccinations for anybody who did not get a chance to get them, so they'll be participating in our Touch a Truck event because they have a van, but it is COVID-19 shots, so do not touch them. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I also would like to thank the mayor for inviting all these youngsters to participate in 4th of July. I will not be there. But I do want to remind everyone that the National Lions Club will also be honoring the wall of athletics for Holman Stadium this year, so they couldn't do it last year because of COVID. So you've got some new people, they'll share their names on that wall, and I think that's great. Another thing is, Mayor, last night, someone asked you a question concerning the Citizens Advisory Commission and the grant money. And I had the answer, but knew I couldn't get up, and I was verified by Jason, our chairperson, and both the Girl Scout Organization and Salivation Army did not put in applications for any grant money this year, so. And as you know, it's been around, this program has been around for a long time, and members of the board and mayor's office do not get involved in how that money is given out. It's based on what the need is. For a while, it was going to homeless and drug addiction and things like that. So they have worked really hard over the past few years to make sure the money goes to those organizations that really need it and to take care of the city in the best way we can.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I learned that today, that those two organizations didn't even, didn't apply for the money.
No, they did not, so, and wishing you all a happy 4th of July.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, happy 4th of July. I will try to be at that event. My heritage is Irish and French, right back to Ireland and France. And I have family ties here well over 100, 150 years, probably even before that. Not me, no, not me.
Welcome.
The other thing I'd like to say is, last night, we had the wrap-up budget. I mean, not the wrap-up, I'm sorry, we had the public hearing on the budget, and there was a lot of misinformation that was brought up. And the one that I really want to hit on is someone brought up that all of our new employees were not well-qualified, not professional. And I can tell you, having worked with all of our new employees, from the chief engineer to planning, park rec, and several other new employees, they are fantastic. They are knowledgeable, they know what they're doing. It took them a little while to get their feet wet relative to Nashua, but they are outstanding. And particularly the new city engineer. I've worked with him extensively on the school project, and he's doing a great job, he has a lot of work on his plate. So I just wanted to bring that up because I thought that the remarks that were made, including our own city clerk, were very, very disrespectful.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Oh, thank you, President Mulcher, I wasn't sure if you saw my hand, so thank you. I have a few comments. I also wanted to just comment on last night's budget hearing. I was not present in the space, but I watched every moment along with you guys. And I had corrections, but most of people beat me to it, so. You know, especially the process around how CAC works, the and how, you know, my Human Affairs work is very similar, where people bring in applications each year, so it's not a virtue, it's who brings the applications forward, and then it goes through a process to get funded. So those committees aren't necessarily choosing between all of the nonprofits, it's between the ones that come forward with projects. I also wanted to congratulate the city and Black Lives Matter Nashville for a wonderful Juneteenth event on Saturday at the library. There was a huge turnout, I know I saw Alderman Mulcher, a number of Mayor Donches was there, and it was really a great celebration of just joy and freedom, and it was just a really nice event. So kudos to everybody for that, it was especially meaningful this year after it has now become a federal holiday. Did I have anything else? I think that was it. I know that the children are definitely looking forward to the way that we're doing 4th of July this year, and I'm looking forward to our display after a year away. Oh, oh, that was my other comment. I miss a wall of mayors, and I always notice the one woman, so. I miss Jim and the whole history on the wall, but it looks great in there.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am glad to be back in the chambers. It's, I have to admit, it feels a little odd, but it's, and I don't have slippers on today, I have real shoes, so that's a little different too.
Probably I have one on.
No one would see them, but I'm also glad to be back here after spending a week at Saint Joe's, as I refer to it as the Casa de Saint Joe's Spa, where I had a beautiful backless gown and wonderful massages, et cetera. It's an incredible facility, and I am grateful that Nashville has that here. They took very good care of me for this past week, and I truly appreciated it. Having gotten out of the hospital so soon, I wasn't able to attend the Juneteenth, which really kind of depressed me as far as that was concerned. But I'd also like to kind of mention the fireworks, and I'm glad that that was brought up. A number of years ago, I had two constituents that were affected by the fireworks, both veterans, both PTSD veterans. One of them was taken out by ambulance and was not returned home for over 90 days because of the effect that the fireworks happened. Another constituent was actually tortured. As each person set off the fireworks, they yelled out that person's name. Number one is fireworks being set off within the city limits is illegal. I found that that was not just cruel, it was evil what that person did, but they are illegal. They affect veterans, they affect just children, they affect wildlife, and they affect animals. And having greyhounds that are very, very affected by this and have been known to have heart attacks over this, I am extraordinarily sensitive to it. So I hope that with this year opening up and having the 4th of July, that people will just enjoy the professional fireworks that are put out there and not set them off, although we are hearing them. And as a great-granddaughter of Napoleon and Dorilla Vaillant, I'm sad that I'm going to miss the thing on Thursday. Like many of my colleagues here will be sitting in our house session at the Bedford Sports Complex to vote on that budget. So it does sadden me that I can't be there. I thought it was originally on the 25th, and then I heard it was the 24th, and it was just really kind of. And I'd like to echo something that Alderman Dowd said. I think it was uncalled for and unkind, the attack on new employees, and especially our city clerk. As she's one of my constituents, as well as the city clerk, I can tell you that she did trial by fire at the last election, and I think she did a phenomenal job. And I'm grateful that we had her there. She had big shoes to fill from the previous clerk, and I think she did a phenomenal job, and I want to thank her personally for everything that she did. And I do want to do a me-too to the mayor for allowing the children of the suite. I think that is a better use. I think they would appreciate it a whole lot more than we would. So I think that's a brilliant idea, and thank you so much. And for all of my colleagues, thank you for your well wishes and the flowers and so on. It went to my heart, so thank you very much.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Madam President, Alderman Jettie, I don't have a drop of French blood in me.
I didn't think so.
Irish to the core. My brother-in-law, who was born in Dublin, he had his blood tested, he was 92%. We had ours tested, we were 98%. He's trying to figure out how we were more Irish than he was, but it's the bloodline. But I wish all my Franco-Canadian friends, you know, enjoy, have a really great time. It was my pleasure to serve 35 years on the Fire Department with many Franco-Canadians. I don't know if they were as good as ours Irish, but they were darn good, you know, but I have to say. It was my pleasure to work with them. I also would like to say with the fireworks, just to remind, what everybody says with the dogs and the pups, it is true. And also, just to remind, they are illegal. And usually every year, somebody does something stupid, that's why we have the Fire Department. But just to be careful, and it's probably better to go to the professional display. And if you do use it, please just be careful and watch out for the kids, too, and that's the important thing. And, Madam President, if I could take a little personal privilege. And, Madam President, if I could take a little personal privilege, lately I've been hanging out a lot with some savory characters, namely Alderman Dowd and other members of the Budget Committee for the past month. And now coming up and towards the end of the month, I'm glad we worked hard on the budget, and we got it done. And now this week is my anniversary week, so glad that we got the budget done before that. It's going to be 38 years with the babe, and the reason I mention it, she's probably going to kill me, but I need all the brownie points I can get from being at all those meetings. So thank you, Madam President.
Alderman O'Brien. So I want to just talk about Stellows and graduation. I know that before they started going to the, what was then the Verizon Center, now is the SNHU Center, there was a graduation that my daughter had. It was 98 degrees at Holman Stadium. Someone passed out while we were there. It was so hot, and they had the gowns on and the hat caps. It was really, really hot. So I think, you know, given that the weather is unpredictable and can be very hot or rainy, I would like to throw out there that, about the possibility of using the Performing Arts Center for a graduation venue. And just throwing it out there. I also would like to talk about the misrepresented comments last night about, specifically about city clerk Lovering. I've known Sue Lovering for 25 years. She is top-notch. There is nothing that woman can't do when she puts her mind to it, and I think she's shown us that. I think she's a very good city clerk, so the comments that were made last night were out of line and just unacceptable. And that goes for the other new hires the city has made as well, like Alderman Dowd said. We have a great city staff, and I'm proud of them, and I think most people in the city are proud of them, so. Thank you, Mayor. And I am excited for the fireworks after having missed them last year. My family, I mean, we, every 4th of July, we get together, we have a cookout, and we walk over to the fireworks. It's just, and they are the best. I mean, for years and years, we saw the fireworks at Seabrook Beach, you know, back in the day when we all went up there. But Nashville does it way better than anyone, so I just want to throw that in there, too. Are we all set? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I just want to, sure, most of you will disagree, but I heard last night some comments and opinions from the public, and I'm glad for, you know, I'm glad people came out to tell us what they felt. The only thing I remember hearing about our wonderful city clerk was the question of why would we, why would we put the expense of certification that takes my understanding, what I believe I heard is four years? Why would they do that first, you know, why would we not choose to invest that in a younger candidate? So.
Because that's discrimination?
That would be illegal. That would violate the law to consider age. That's illegal age discrimination.
It's illegal to, sure, well. All right, thank you. That is, I didn't hear anything really negative about the person or the job she's doing. So I just want to clarify that. I don't, I don't want people to be afraid to say anything because at the next meeting of the Board of Aldermen, they're going to hear, you know, I don't know, their comments getting, getting put down. Thank you.
They were inappropriate, in my opinion, and probably most everyone's opinion in this room. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tomorrow evening, the Joint Special School Building Committee at 7:00 P.M. in person at Nashua High North. And then next Monday and Tuesday, we have the budget wrap-up sessions to consider anything we want to do with the budget. And then July 1st is, we have the meeting to vote on the budget. Budget, if passed, will take effect on July 1st.
But Alderman O'Brien said we're done with the budget.
Well, not some false pod, but, you know, we still got a dragon on, yes.
If he's not there Monday and Tuesday, he'll have more problems than he would with his wife.
But shouldn't you?
I'll see if I can stretch the elastic band.
So if anyone on the board has any questions, concerns, wants to bring up something on the budget, any member of the Board of Aldermen can come and discuss and could even make motions. The voting will be the five people that are on the Budget Committee. And then the Budget Committee will send that to the full board, which again, you'll have an opportunity on July 1st. But rather than prolong the July 1st meeting, if you have any questions, concerns, or whatever about the budget, I suggest that you come either Monday or Tuesday. We may wrap up Monday if things go well.
My understanding is only the Budget Committee can make motions on the budget. Is that true, Alderman? Attorney Bolton?
When you're in full session, any member of the Board of Aldermen.
Well, he's talking about wrap-up.
Yeah, my question earlier was about the wrap-up sessions. Well, maybe I, at your wrap-up sessions, will it be the full board or just a meeting of the committee?
A meeting of the committee.
Well, then it's the committee. Okay.
Just want to clarify that.
All right, so. On the other hand. It's going to be made by committee members. It's, it's, it's common that if a member of the board who is not on a particular committee wishes to make a motion, that a committee member often makes the motion in their stead.
That's true. Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Alderman Karen.
Okay, so as you listened to earlier, there'll be a public hearing with the Personnel Committee on Tuesday, July 6th instead of the 5th, because that's the holiday. We start at 7:00. It will be a long meeting because we also have the legislation concerning the Police Commission. So just so you'll know, public hearing first on the addition of people to the Board of Health, and then the regular meeting of personnel. Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone over here, committee announcements on this side? No? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 23rd, which is tomorrow night for my Calendar Challenge friends, immediately following the Special Board of Aldermen meeting, at 7:15, we will convene the Committee on Infrastructure. So all are welcome to attend.
I think that's everything. Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Thank you. I would like to make a motion that the June 22nd, 2021 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Would the board please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
Thank you, and we are adjourned at 8:49 P.M. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.